All right, I will call the Wednesday, January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, meeting of the Weathersfield Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Joe is not here, so could I impose on Ryan to take the attendance, please?
Absolutely. Chairman Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Chair Allard is here. Quick hammer. Members, Commissioner Hughes. Commissioner Oikle. Commissioner Dean, I know he usually calls. Commissioner Homick.
Nope.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes, here.
Commissioner Vera. Commissioner Drake. Commissioner Liam Bruny.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson.
All right, so that's five regular members and one alternate, so I'll seat Peter. Just to kind of let everybody who's from the public here know, the two public hearings that we had scheduled for tonight have both asked to be continued to our next meeting. So I'd like to go out of order and ask if someone would make a motion to continue the opening of public hearing three thousand five twenty-one Z Lucas Karakos and public hearing three thousand nine twenty-one Z Brian Cousins to Tuesday, February first, twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock PM.
Motion made, Mr. Chairman George.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, motion made by George, seconded by Ryan, any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, okay, so those two hearings will not go forward tonight, they will be at our next meeting Tuesday, February first. And it will probably once again be on soon. So that takes us to item three point one, a discussion regarding reconstruction of Wilkett Hill Road from Jordan Lane to Victoria Road in Hartford, and I would invite Town Engineer Derek Greger to speak on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I stated my name is Derek Greger, I'm town engineer. I'm here tonight with Bill Anderson and Josh Ian Nadi from VHB, who's our consultant on the project to discuss a work that we're planning to do along Wilkett Hill Road from Jordan Lane extending north to Victoria Road in Hartford. I'm just to give you a little bit of history on the project, in May of twenty eighteen, the town submitted an application for local transportation capital improvement program funds, which are known as LOTSIP. With that program, state funding is one hundred percent of the state funding is used for construction costs and the town funds the design costs to get to construction. So in October twenty nineteen, we were awarded initially two point seven million dollars. During design, we made some changes in the design based on soil conditions that were encountered during test pits. And we got increased to about three point three million dollars in funding right now for the reconstruction work. In addition, the town was allocated five hundred thousand dollars in state grant and aid funds to include installation of new streetlights along the project limits. So we had retained VHB for survey, design and permitting services, using local road funds. We're here tonight because the project's at the final design stage, and we're planning to issue a bid solicitation soon, so we just wanted to come in, give you, give you some information, let you know about the project, it's pretty large. And we presented to the town council last night, so they got the same presentation last night, so they're aware of where we're going with the work. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Bill Anderson, he's the project manager from VHB, and he can provide you with some additional information.
Thanks, Derek, let me see if I can share my screen. I'd like to share my screen to go through this presentation here, let's see. It says host disabled parts, participant screen sharing, can you allow me to share screen, please? Denise, I think you're on mute.
I think that you should be able to now.
There we go, all right, we're in business, perfect. All right, well, again, thank you everyone, I'll have a brief presentation to go through, and at the end, look forward to taking the questions that you might have. So this is for the reconstruction of Wilkett Hill Road and Franklin Avenue. This is the LOTSIP project funded by the state. So let's start with our presentation overview. So first, I'll provide a project overview, second, I'll discuss the proposed improvements, third, I'll go through the next steps. At the end, I look forward to taking your questions. Started a project overview, so this project begins at the intersection of Wilkett Hill and Jordan Lane. It extends north to the intersection with Victoria Road in the city of Hartford. The project is approximately fourteen hundred feet in length. This is a mixed use corridor with most residential units on the west side of the roadway. We do have two state facilities on the east side of the corridor, Department of Corrections and Department of Labor is also a park and ride lot near the intersection of Wilkett Hill Road and Jordan Lane. Average daily traffic, that's the number of traffic vehicles that travel in this rotary per day is approximately five thousand six hundred vehicles. These counts were done back in two thousand eighteen, and this accounts for vehicles traveling in both direction. This is a major bus route for CT Transit, they also use the Department of Labor parking lot as a layover area for their buses. So as Derek mentioned, the town did receive two separate funding sources for this project, the first is from through the LOTSIP program. That's approximately three point three million dollars. At our final design stage, our construction cost estimate is approximately three point five million dollars. Just want to note here that the actual amount the town will receive will be based on the lowest bid received from contractors plus an additional twenty percent for construction oversight and contingency. So in addition to the LOTSIP fund, the town did receive five hundred thousand dollars from DECD for lighting along the project corridor, and our estimate currently is three hundred and eight thousand dollars. The design for this project is funded by the town. So in terms of the lane configuration now on Wilkett, Wilkett Hill currently, there are two lanes in northbound direction. One lane in the southbound direction with on-street parking. These lanes are excessively wide, there are lack of sidewalk ramps on there. For pedestrian crossing the roadway, it's a very long distance with unprotected crosswalks. And for anyone who wants to drive this road and knows that the pavement is in pretty poor condition, hence the reason why this project is warranted. So on this sheet, I'm showing a lot of information, but it's going to really illustrate what, what we're doing for the proposed improvement, so currently, the pavement thickness, the pavement depth on our, or the pavement cross-section of Wilkett Hill, we have four inches of hardness as fall placed on twelve inches of concrete base beneath that concrete base or is unsuitable, some type of unsuitable material, which is your typical, you know, stone mixing with some type of clay. So what we've been doing will be over escaping beyond that concrete base, removing some of that unsuitable material. Then we're going to backfill that excavated area with suitable material and then overlay the roadway with six inches of hard mix asphalt. So this, this is a plan view of our improvements here, so for quick orientation, to your left, we have Jordan Lane, and we're going to be working away from Jordan Lane in south towards Victoria Road in the north in Hartford, so in terms of what these colors represent for improvement, let me just start at the top of my screen here and go through these colors, the ones shown here in orange, that's us replacing sidewalks to either meet ADA or replacing sidewalks in poor condition. We'll be replacing all the driver aprons at each driveway. And then the brass strip or your snow shelf will be restoring those, I'm trying to new grass in the, in this store shelf here. We'll be replacing the carbon through an entire project area, so the carbon will be replaced with granite carpet. In terms of the striping of the roadway, we're going to be providing a five-foot bike lane, a four-foot buffer, eleven-foot travel lane, a two-foot shoulder. This existing median will remain, we're replacing the carbon, the trees will remain. We're installing fourteen light poles within the median throughout the project area, so these what's shown in the red, these are the light, the lights will be installing throughout the project area. The northbound direction is essentially mimics the southbound in terms of the lane configuration. Just want to note here that we actually narrowed the roadway in northbound section by about eight and a half feet. And in turn, we've picked up an additional, additional green space between the existing sidewalk and the carbon. Where, where, where possible, we're actually in, planted, we were planting some additional trees. And in terms of meeting what we call MS four permit requirements, or essentially just meeting the requirements as best as we can from DEP that a town is required to meet, we're installing what we call a low-impact development through the project here, essentially what these are, is a filtration base, so what happens is that water would run off this roadway here, and this is chamber that's filled with filtration materials, so the water runs through here. And then that is connected to this downstream catch basin, so that water is treated before it enters the storm drainage system through the project area. So we have a total of four bus stops through the project area, so what we're going to be providing is a pull-off area at each of those bus stops, and this pull-off area will be a concrete pad. So we have two in the northbound direction and two to the southbound direction. So essentially, what we discussed in the previous sheet, we, is essentially just showing here on this sheet, so nothing really different here, again, you know, probably, you know, additional green space, we're adding trees where possibly these trees through here, where parts possibly this thing, the project corridor. And onto the next sheet, the project ends at the intersection with Victoria Road, so in addition to replacing sidewalk ramps at this intersection, we're also installing pedestrian buttons through this project here, sorry, at this intersection here. I talked about the low-impact system that we're installing, essentially what it is, as I said, it's a chamber, so imagine here, in this picture, your water runs down the gutter. It enters the system, it gets filtered, and then it's a pipe connecting the system to the catch basin here, so that's really how it functions. As for the lighting, again, a lot of stuff in the sheet, I just want to bring your attention to this detail here, so the light will be twenty feet high, will be installed in double luminaires on, on the light pole, again, we have fourteen of those lights installed in the median through the corridor. So this is an example of what we currently proposing, this is a black mud finish structure that lighten are shown here, and for this project, we install lighting, you know, back-to-back, so this is just one showing, but for our project, it would be like install back-to-back on the pole, I think there's some discussion as to whether this would be the final type of light that we show for this part of it, at this point, this is what we, we are proposing. As for the next step, we're in the process of securing easements. We, actually, we just have one easement and a couple of rights that we're working through at this point. Jordan Lane is actually a state road, and because we're doing work within Jordan Lane, we need to go through the process of obtaining an encouchment permit for this project, so what we're doing as designers, essentially building on a pre-approval work in place, once the contractor comes on board, he or she will obtain the actual encouchment permit. For the signal work that will be done at the intersection of Victoria Road and Franklin Avenue, that requires a permit from the Office of State Traffic Administration, so we're currently, that's already been submitted to them, and we're working through the approval process for that signal. We're anticipating some in the plans, that will final documents to crop, who actually oversees the LOTSIP program sometime within the next week or so for this project. Given the schedule, we are confident that the construction for this project will be completed this year. So with that, our end of our presentation, Derek, if you want to add anything before we actually teach questions.
No, Bill, I think you dig it out. I have one, Mr. Chairman, George. I'm curious, I'm not an engineer, but I've had a lot of experience in planning for forty or fifty years, maybe, and I follow engineering stuff to some degree. Why, why do you have to dig up the concrete base that was there probably, is it deteriorated? Yes. It's a pretty solid thing, isn't it? I wondered why, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so, yes, initially when the, the work was constructed, the concrete base was in pretty good shape, but over the years, what happened is that we have had, you know, you two, the companies, you know, coming through there, they've done trench cuts, and there's, you know, when they actually construct the concrete pavement, there are joints in that pavement. So over time, those joints gets wider and wider, so if you drive out there right now, what you'd probably see are these cracks across the roadway, and those are the cracks in the, the concrete pavement that's reflecting through the surface of that roadway, so.
So it has deteriorated, that's what you're saying.
It has, that's correct, yeah.
Cracks and then digging from time to time over the forty or sixty years or whatever the hell others, yeah, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No question, what, what's the northern limits of the concrete pavement? Is it at that intersection of Victoria, or is, is it Batumis as you go north?
It keeps going through to Hartford.
The, the concrete pavement does?
That's correct, yeah.
So we're meeting. Do you know what the depth of that is?
It's plus or minus twelve inches.
I guess, I guess I just have a concern with meeting twelve inches of concrete pavement with six inches of bit. It just seems like, you know, at, at least at the intersection of Victoria, I would probably, you know, if I'm designing it, probably over-design that northern section of the Batumis to like an equivalent to what that concrete pavement is, otherwise what you end up, especially in the northbound, not necessarily southbound, because you're going in the direction of more rigid to less rigid, but as you're traveling northbound, you're on a more flexible surface, six inches of it, you're going to hit a rut right as you hit that concrete pavement. But if you, if you step that rigidity up as you go north, like increase that Batumis to like a foot of bit for, you know, at least a section, you could potentially mitigate some of that cracking that you might end up seeing, it's, you know, it's not something that would happen right away, but you know, five to ten years, you, you could end up with a pretty sizable rut there, especially when you got a lot of through traffic going there, so. I'm going to offer any recommendations, I guess.
Looking to that.
Did you, just one, one little question on the gas?
I think you hit you.
Sorry about that, I'm, I'm doing the thing where you hold the spacebar here, let me hit the. All right.
Yeah, we'll figure this out after four years.
No, I was holding the spacebar and then I let go and I clicked on Google Earth. All right, so the, the gas station at the southern end, did we look at all into closing the driveway that leads to Wilkett Hill, the, the curb cut?
We, we did not, I, I, we no, we didn't actually, I think we thought it was, you know, it was important for us to maintain the driveway for access and out of the parking lot directly to Wilkett Hill Road.
The only thing I would offer is just in way of sort of observation there is that that island gap is used as a cheater for lots of traffic in that intersection, you could, if you go on Google Earth, you'll see the, the tire squeal marks. But you're able to see the traffic pattern of the people who are cutting through the intersection, so, so where your mouse is now, people are, you know, if you're pretending you're going to go into the gas station, but you're really going to go into the intersection and then take a right, because you want to, you, you just want to skip through all that traffic. That's a very common thing, and also a lot of people doing U Vs through there. So just, just an observation that I made living in town. But if you wanted to possibly take this as an opportunity to close up that island, or at least make it a, you know, traversable yet deterrent to a cut through, it's just one more observation that I've made driving through there. That's it for me.
Yeah, thank you, we, we have been in touch with the property owner, and that's something we could broach with them. We are, as far as their access, we are narrowing the, the concrete apron quite a bit from what it is now, it's going to be reduced. I think to thirty feet wide, it's much wider than that currently, so it'll be a lot tighter. Generally, my experience is with properties on the corner like that, particularly commercial, that they'll look at a closure on one of the side streets as a, you know, reduction in the value of their property, so I'm not sure they're going to be agreeable, but that's, that's something we can discuss with them and see if that is something they would consider.
Yeah, it's not a particularly lively gas station now, but if it ends up being one in the future, I can see where keeping that curb cut would be beneficial to them, but, you know, anything, even if it's like a reversible island or something that's directional, you know, you can make it so that it's a deterrent for people traveling north and trying to cut, or people trying to take that U-turn, you make it a directional so that you can only go north on Wilkett Hill Road, something, something like that, and you could do that just with the existing stamped island there, if you just extend that and give it like a little knife's edge sort of up at the, up at that northern end, you could potentially deter anybody from that southern ramp or bypass there on the intersection, you can deter anybody, because they'd have to take like an extra awkward wide sort of turn. So just, I was just curious if we looked into that at all, because if you, like I said, if you go on Google Earth and you hit street view, you're going to see exactly what I'm talking about in terms of the tire marks and what people do at that intersection, I don't I don't know exactly how common it is, but I know it's common enough that it's all over the pavement, so. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I, I have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, I didn't know about this project, so is this a betterment project, what's the need to do this project, is it overall maintenance of this stretch, is it betterment, is it combination of both, is it traffic? I'm curious, what, what was the motivation behind this particular stretch of road being reconstructed at this time?
Yeah, I mean, the primary reason was it's in extremely poor condition, has been for a long time, the town has been making, you know, temporary repairs for, for a while, and given the traffic volumes we have out there, which are pretty high, is also one of the major routes for CT Transit. So for all those reasons, you know, the, the impetus of the project was to reconstruct the road section, so we got a safer better travel way through there, I mean, this is looked as a, looked at as a gateway as you enter or leave town. So in addition to improving the structural conditions, it was also looking at more of a complete streets approach by adding bike lanes, by adding bus pull-off areas to, to get them more off the road. You know, reducing the two lanes in the northbound direction to one, because only one is really needed and narrowing the road as part of a road diet to help with traffic calming and reducing, you know, stormwater runoff, things of that nature, so you know, it, it expanded into, into more of a complete streets project, but, you know, initially the impetus was just the poor pavement condition, so state funding through this program is available for these types of projects. They have a variety of types of projects, but, you know, full reconstruction like this is one of them, which is why we, we put in the application, which at this point is already about three and a half years ago, so we're, we're anxious to get the project done. I would be interested in knowing if anyone has any concerns or comments about the light fixtures that are being proposed. You know, we're, we were looking at the area and looking at something a little more utilitarian. So the fixtures are very similar to the ones, if you've been at Town Hall, that are out in the parking lot. But just like to get feedback, if anyone, you know, has any thoughts on that, there, as mentioned, there can be double luminaires on twenty-foot tall poles. Everything will be black in color. The lighting right now is only in, on the southbound lane, so on the west side of the road, there are streetlights, there are, there are none on the east side of the road for the northbound direction, whatever light is just, whatever spills over from the other side of the road, so now we have them down the center and be able to light up, you know, with the right of way adequately through this area. If anyone has anything they could offer on that, we'll open to comments.
No, I guess my thought is that they, they look fine and that's a good location, I just hope they're easy to replace when people crash into them and knock them over.
Yeah, that, that does happen, and one of the things with this project is we're going to be putting in granite curb. If you've been out there, the Batumis curb, you know, with plowing operations and the way they have to plow, gets beat up pretty badly, so this, the whole area will be granite, which, you know, we, we lobby for that as a kind of an extension of Franklin Avenue, which has granite curb, so that should hopefully limit some of that, and hopefully with the new, you know, pavement markings and such, that would be a better situation than we have out there now.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, having the islands is helpful, I've gone down Weathersfield Avenue a few times in the last year and found that to be kind of a horrifying experience, so I hope we can design to avoid that.
So that lighting is not the same as what's on going ninety-nine north, right? Because there's, I know we have like some improvements that were done there, it's more in the South Hartford side, not necessarily ours, but in terms of conformity with that design, we're going with something different.
Are you referring to Silvestine Highway?
Yeah, like, just like that South Hartford line. There's, we have a couple, there's some decorative lighting and some streetscape and looks like, you know, something similar to the product that we're hoping to see, I think, on Wilkett Hill.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't look at that area to see specifically what they did, you know, it is a block over, it looks like they have they have some different types of poles, and some that are, look a little bit more like acorn shaped on each side of the road, so yeah, we're, we're doing something different, we really didn't look to match that, you know, seeing that it was a different, different roadway from the one we're connecting to.
Okay. All right. Looks good. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for Derek or or the engineer?
But you just, Pete, I dropped out there for a while, but I got the gist of the answer that I was looking for, but I'm back in if, if you're wondering.
Okay.
I do have a question, what's the what's the honeycomb at that driveway?
That is, oh, that is the commercial driveway symbol that we replace in the small section of the actual driveway, just to make sure the grates tie back in.
At number thirty-eight as well?
Yes, yes.
So the honeycomb just means the, the deeper section?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Very good.
Good stuff.
Is that, is that all you wanted to present tonight, or is there more?
Yeah, that, that's all we had for the presentation, more or less, just to bring it to your attention, get a little, a little bit of feedback, so we appreciate, you know, us come in and do that. And like we said, we'll, we'll continue moving forward and look at some of the suggestions that were offered, and we're looking at this point to get construction done, this, this construction season.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Derek.
Thank you. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, the next two public hearing items have been continued, no other business, no minutes. Denise, do you have a staff report?
The only thing that I wanted to briefly mention is I did report last night to the town council on the moratorium regarding the cannabis establishments, so we did begin that discussion. They've asked for some additional information, which I will present to them, I believe that they will have this again on their agenda in two weeks. I didn't really get a clear sense at this point, you know, the, the direction that they wanted us to go in terms of crafting a regulation versus prohibiting the use. But. crafting a regulation versus prohibiting the use, um, but um but we did get a lot of comments uh to take into consideration.
Okay, good. Yeah, I'm glad we're at least moving forward with that conversation, just so that we can make sure everybody's clear on what, what their, each other's opinions are. Um, anybody from the public wishing to make a comment on general matters of planning and zoning? Anybody in the public? Right? Uh, no correspondence, so in addition to the uh Lucky Lou and the, the Wilkard Hill Garage, what do you think we have on the agenda for the first?
Um, I also have an application for a commercial vehicle at sixty-one Arrow Road. Um, it's for one vehicle, um, and then I, I, I don't know that they're actually gonna wanna be on the, the next agenda, but we do have an application coming in, it was just approved from design review, six fifty-seven Silastine, it's the former Rite Aid. Um, the International Institute of uh Cosmetology recently purchased the building, and they'll be seeking a change of use uh from retail to uh cosmetology school, um, so I, um I don't think that they'll meet the deadline for the next meeting.
No, and I think just for managing everybody's workload, it might be better if they didn't.
Right.
Alright, um, anything else anybody wants to uh bring up tonight before we adjourn? If not. There's no adjournment. Alright. Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by George to adjourn, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did we set a record?
I think we did.
Yeah, yeah, at least a modern day record, yeah.
Thirty-eight minutes.
I bet you all the other top five, I bet you all the other top five ones were ones where George wasn't here.
Forty-six years, this may be the fastest.
Alright, everybody, thank you so much.
No.
Alright. Say, Ryan, have a good night.
Take care.
Alright.
Bye-bye.